Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Combined Work Session. Today is May 4th. And it's 6:00 PM. At this time, I will call the Clayton County Board of Education mid to order. I'm going to do the, oh. Starting with District 1. Please let me present Jasmine Bowles.
Present.
Mark Christmas.
Present.
Jessie Goree here, present. Victoria Williams, District 4.
Present.
Ophelia Burrow, District 5.
Present.
Mary Baker, District 6.
Present.
Judy Johnson, District 7. Ladies and gentlemen, I know she's having trouble with her microphone. Dr. Leeka Anderson, District 8.
Present.
Mr. Ben Striker.
I'm present, Judy Johnson.
Okay. Yeah, I'm having a little problem because I can't pull up my E-Board. So you all bear with me, please.
I have it up if you need me to.
Okay, go ahead. The next item.
After call to order, we have the executive session and recommendations from the executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. At this time. We have a personnel.
Hey, girl.
I will let.
How you doing? Getting ready to.
Can you put that phone on?
Someone put your phone. Put it on silent because you're in person conversating.
Thank you.
That's how you're, um.
Dr. Beasley.
Okay. This, this. The Chair, members of the board. I do have one recommendation today. I would like to recommend Joanne McDonald to be the principal at Brown Elementary School.
It has moved, it has been recommended by Dr. Beasley. That we accept Joanne. Can you repeat the name again, Beasley?
Joanne McDonald.
Joanne McDonald, the principal of Brown Elementary School. Can I get a motion for the recommendation?
I support that motion.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
Was the please state your name since I can't see everyone. I believe it was Mary Baker.
Mary Baker.
Made the motion and seconded by Dr. Anderson. Okay, I will do the roll call again for voting. So it has been moved and properly seconded and we accept the pretend recommendation. Uh, please tell me your vote. Jasmine Bowles.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark Christmas.
Yes.
Jessie Goree. Yes. Victoria Williams.
Yes.
Ophelia Burrow.
Yes.
Mary Baker.
Yes.
Judy Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Striker.
Judy, do you want to hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Is that a yes, Mr. Striker? Mr. Striker? I can't hear Mr. Striker's vote, so he is present. Uh, I have the vote as eight zero.
He's there, Mr. Striker.
Everyone, please forgive us for technical difficulties. I see that actually, I, that what our teachers have been going through.
That's right. And this is the tool, this is the tool that they use, so everyone should understand.
Okay, well, Dr. Beasley, I would be happy to. Now, but we have an eight oh decision. I'm not sure of Mr. Striker, so.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Mark Christmas, if, if Mr. Striker go over to the right-hand corner, touch on those three dots, he can type in his, uh, answer.
In the chat box. Or he can hit the chat box.
All right, this time, let's just accept that the recommendation has been accepted. Go ahead and acknowledge Dr. Beasley.
Yes, ma'am, we'd like to welcome, uh, Joanne McDonald. She served as the AP there, and now she is the principal at Brown Elementary School. Let's give her a hand. Congratulations, Ms. McDonald.
That's my elementary school.
Excellent.
Okay, before we move on to our, uh, to the board recognitions of our valedictorians. And I would like to offer a moment of silence for one of our employees, Officer McClendon, who lost his mother. Uh, this. For all the residents of Clayton County that are dealing with the pandemic. Uh, please let us pause for a moment, silence, please. Thank you. Thank you so much. And also, uh, I want to wish all of the teachers a happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yay.
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 And after dealing with technology today, you all, I really, I take my hat off to you because I tried to do a, uh, a, a video this morning and it took me three hours to. So much for everything that you do. You do. Okay, at this time, uh, Dr. Beasley, we'll let you, uh, do the board recognition, our valedictorians and salutatorians and Teacher Appreciation.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Goree. I will, I will just pitch it to the communications department. That's probably why we hear the, hear the echo.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
I'm turning my volume down, and you all probably should turn your volume down.
Good evening, every, everyone. Mr. Charles White will provide our three recommendations or recognitions, excuse me, for this evening.
Turn your mic on, Charles. Cherry, were you on mute, Mr. White? Charles, you there?
I'm going to try to fill in for him. Let me get my notes here. Uh, we, we have three recognitions this evening. The first will start with commend the Atlanta Community Food Bank, uh, who has served over 6,000 meals to Clayton community since March, the week of March 16th, along with Nutrition Services Team, who had served over 230,000 meals to Clayton County students. So let's commend them for their efforts. And the second recognition, of course, uh, our Madam Chair has alluded to, uh, today, the beginning of today, to March 8th is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And we want to thank all of our teachers employed with Clayton County Public Schools. And Dr. Beasley actually has a special announcement and greeting to extend, and we'll proceed with the other recognition. And I'll pause at that.
Thank you, thank you. We just want to say thank you to all of our teachers. Uh, as you all can see, this pandemic has shown not just Clayton County. It has shown all of us in the world across this nation how important our teachers are. And so our teachers, since the day prior to this pandemic and since March 16th, our teachers have not relented in ensuring that our students have the best instructional experience. And so we should all just commend our teachers, thank our teachers, let them know how much we appreciate them. We've, we've asked our community to be very creative in how they show appreciation to our teachers using yard displays, if they live near a teacher, going to that teacher's house and singing them a song, applauding them, uh, whatever, to show some gratitude, immense gratitude to our teachers. So I just want us, if we will all just pause, and let's just give all of our teachers a resounding applause and, 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 and let them know how much we appreciate them with, with whatever shout-outs that we can share at this time. Let's give it up for our teachers. So we have a video to share, uh, and so we've sent it to all the board members, and we're going to release that video as soon as we complete, uh, this presentation. So Ms. Goree, what I'd like to do is pitch it to the board members, because I'm sure our, your, the board members would like to say something in appreciation to our teachers.
All right, Dr. Beasley, we'll start with Ms. Bowles.
Hi, teachers. Um, thank you so much. As a former teacher and lifelong teacher, I just want to say thank you for all that you do for our scholars and our families and our, uh, whole community. So I think now more than ever, a lot of people understand the importance of K-12 public education and all that you do all day. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I'm the hot half of myself and everyone in District 1. We love you.
You all can proceed in order.
Hey, thank you, teachers, for all you do, especially during this pandemic. You have done excellent. We thank you for District 2 from the bottom of our heart. Uh, like I heard on the newscast, teachers ought to be the highest-paid profession that there could possibly be. I know that's going to, uh, give me a shot in the head, but appreciate you teachers for all that you do. Thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, teachers. We really appreciate everything you do inside and outside of the schools. And loving on our children in the schools and outside the schools. Thank y'all very much.
Ms. Burrow.
Thank you. I know what to go through, and I am so happy that I'm retired and I don't have to learn all this information. I know how it is. Uh, I've talked to teachers in Florida and everywhere, and they were having so many different problems. I was afraid to ask Dr. Beasley. Uh, the kids are not logging in, they're just chilling. And so thank you so much. And if there's anything I could ever do to help your day go smoothly, call me.
Ms. Baker.
I just want to, again, say thank you to every one of the teachers. Um, I believe that parents are going to have a lot more respect for teachers, um, going forward. Um, I don't think teachers are going to have much problem getting any of the supplies they ask for next year. And, uh, they're going to find out that parent, that the teachers not only teach their children, but love their children. And it shows in all the extra work that they're doing, um, during this crazy time. So thank you again for everything you do. Um, there's never enough that we can give or say that would, um, completely show our appreciation.
Mr. Striker.
Thank you so much, teachers, on behalf of District 9. Um, can everybody hear me? Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, teachers, on behalf of District 9. You, you are truly the real heroes and, um, um, really appreciate how you took the lead and, and carrying out our children's academics.
Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, teachers, for all you do. Um, as you all know, I'm on the front lines with you all every day, but I just want to thank you all for, um, being relentless and working with this virtual learning. I know it's been, um, it's been a beast, but I know that you all have done a great job. I've, I've heard you teaching, I've talked to some teachers, I've, you know, I'm, I'm there and I hear you teaching, and I hear you trying to get those lessons done and things of that nature. So again, thank you, teachers, for all you do, and we appreciate you.
Clayton County Public School teacher, I want to thank you as the Chair of the Board for all of those 55,000 students that you teach every day. Who would have thought that the new words would be pandemic, coronavirus, shelter in place, quarantine, social distancing, these are the words. But I thank you for each and everything that you have done for our students that you do on a daily basis. And I want to do a little parody from Dr. Seuss. I will teach you in a room. I will teach you now on Zoom. I will teach you from my house. I will teach you with my mouse. I will teach you here or there. I will teach you because I care. And I do care, and I get all these nice messages that people are typing in, but I'm not smart enough to try to hold this meeting and type at the same time. Thank you all for everything that you do.
That was very nice, Ms. Goree. I like that, Dr. Seuss, huh?
Yes.
Well, to, to our teachers, thank you. We appreciate all of you, and we pray and hope that you feel appreciated to the extent that you can, given the circumstances. Thank you, Board of Education.
You left out District 7.
Oh, Ms. Johnson?
Judy, I, yeah. Forgive me, Judy Johnson.
Jump in there, Ms. Johnson.
From District 7, I want to offer my heartfelt thanks to all the teachers for what you have done during this time. As everyone said, who would have imagined ever that we would go through what we've been through? But you've all handled it like champions, and you have shown your high performance to us, and we appreciate that more than you will ever know.
Okay. Dr. Beasley, do you have a video?
We do have a video. We've already shared it with everyone.
All right.
The video is now extended to all stakeholders, sir.
So it's posted on all platforms, so everyone can see it, okay?
Okay. All right, are we ready to move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yes, we are. Now, we have our vows and sounds.
Okay. Okay, madam.
Charles, you doing?
Okay.
Am I speaking with you now?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Beasley, and everyone else who is joining us. Each year, students with the highest cumulative grade point average and the second highest cumulative grade point average who meet all criteria are named valedictorian and salutatorian for their respective high schools. Tonight, it is my privilege to announce each high school's class of 2020 valedictorian and salutatorian. For Charles Drew High School, John Pham is the valedictorian, salutatorian, high gay. For Elite Scholars Academy, the valedictorian is David Luna, and the salutatorian is Mariah Milner. For Forest Park High School, the valedictorian is Cindy Nguyen, and the salutatorian is C. Pham. For Jonesboro High School, the valedictorian is Ann Nguyen, and the salutatorian is Alina Bernaby. For Lovejoy High School, the valedictorian is Joy Gordon, and the salutatorian is Kelvin Nguyen. Morrow High School's valedictorian is Gabriela Perez. The salutatorian is Nadia Williams. For Mount Zion High School, the valedictorian is Evelyn Ferganza, and the salutatorian is Elizabeth Wei. For Mondays Mill High School, the valedictorian is Zachary Lanigama, and the salutatorian is Demia Phillips. For North Clayton High School, the, the valedictorian is Emanuel Asaminiam Aji, and the salutatorian is Dara Kim. For the Perry Career Academy, the valedictorian is Kiara Samms, and the salutatorian is Alexis Samms. For Riverdale High School, the valedictorian is Summer Blanding, and the salutatorian is Deanna Teig. And for the Stillwell School of the Arts, the valedictorian is Darian Long, and the salutatorian is Diana Nguyen. That is the list of valedictorians and salutatorians for the class of 2020.
Let's give all of our vows and sounds, applause, shout-outs. We appreciate all of you, and we're so pleased that over 300 people are listening, participating, uh, in this board meeting. And so the word should be spread widely, and we posted their names on all platforms, so our community can celebrate our vows and sounds. So again, let's give all of them a great round of applause.
Way to go, way to go.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley, for recognizing. And Mr. White.
Ms. Goree, excuse me one thing. I do need to throw this to Dr. Beasley.
We forgot to announce, I forgot to announce that each of them will get a laptop. Isn't that a great thing?
Yeah.
Thanks to Solicitor, uh, General, uh, Brooks. And each of them will get a check from the Clayton County Public Schools Foundation in the amount of $500. So they get a laptop and a check this time. So congratulations again to all our vows and sounds, and thank you Solicitor Brooks, uh, Solicitor Brooks, and to our Clayton County Public Schools Foundation, and everyone who donates to the Clayton County Public School Foundation. Your donations do come in handy, and they go directly to lift our children.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Has, that is, uh, Mr. White completed his presentation?
I believe so. He was pitching it to me because I, I forgot my part.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, we're about, uh, C. minus with this meeting, but, uh, we'll do better. Okay. I believe that those are all the presentations. At this time, we will have our ethics statement. In accordance with Board Policy BA, it is the, the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest? Our appearance of such conflict. Headed before the board at this meeting, are appearing on our proposed agenda. If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of the conflict and refrain from participating in the matter involved. Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the board work session, March 30th. As of this time, I have not received any corrections, so therefore, the, uh, minutes will stand as presented. And we'll move on to updates to the board.
Okay, Ms. Goree, we have three updates today.
Okay.
Uh, we'll start out with our curriculum instruction and assessment, Dr. Ebony Lee.
Good evening, Dr. Beasley. Can you hear me clearly?
Not, you can't sound muffled for some reason.
Oh, goodness. I wonder if everyone can mute with that together.
I'll, we'll mute if that helps.
Is that better?
Yes.
It is? Okay, but let me know if you all can't hear me, and I'll, I'll try to speak slowly. So good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, board members, district staff, and community members. Um, for this evening's CIA update, I provided you with a presentation that reflected the following topics. Um, I updated you on the Phase 2 grading and learning expectations, which grew out of feedback from our parents and our schools. Also, you have an update on the advanced placement exams, which will now take place at home. They will be online exams. Our summertime STEM camps, which tentatively have been moved to July for face-to-face, but we are working on other contingencies in the event we can't hold them face-to-face. Also, you had an update on the summer professional learning, which will be so critical to, um, equipping our teachers to begin the year after a pandemic. So those professional learning sessions will now be conducted virtual, but they will focus on social emotional learning, which Dr. Duncan and her team have done a great job on developing modules. Also, we're going to focus on how do we continue to maximize the Google Classroom experience even as we go into next school year? And then a lot of their training will be on addressing students' learning loss since we would have had so much time without face-to-face instruction and having students with limited access. And then, and finally, the topic in the presentation was how are we addressing and how will we address students' learning loss? And that was stemmed from having summer learning opportunities to during the school year, using our assessment data very meaningfully and having revised and updated core curriculum guidance documents that tell teachers in the moment which prerequisite standards or skills are essential for each unit of study. So that's just a summary of what was in the presentation. I won't go through it again, slide by slide. I know you've already provided questions, and the school leadership team and other team members provided responses. So, um, at this time, um, I just want to highlight that, of course, during this pandemic, no one has had a blueprint. No one in the nation, in the world, most likely. And so we have just been collaborating and meeting and planning regularly to just think through how does support look like, what does it look like when you have students who may have limited access, limited resources, and various other challenges? And so our hearts are with our parents, but we have tried to really employ and deploy all of our resources in our districts, in our district to provide our students and our families with support. And so it truly has been a team effort, and it has been a collaborative and critically thought-out effort. So at this time, I'll pause and see if there are questions, um, or comments, um, for the team and for me.
At this time, board members, I'm going to start with, I'll start with Ms. Bowles, and if you have questions or comments, uh, we'll let you, um, do that at this time. And so that I don't skip anyone, I'll just start down with Ms. Bowles, and you can go in order from, uh, left to right. Uh, I will, Dr. Uh, Anderson and I can, will be the last two that have any comments.
Ms. Goree.
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Beasley here. I just wanted to remind everyone that the parents and all can view all the items on E-Board as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and good evening, Dr. Lee. This is Ms. Bowles. I do have a question. Um, I forwarded a bulk of questions that I'm excited to see answers for at another time, but right now, I'm curious off the top of your head if you can share with me anything that we're doing as a district to provide professional learning or professional development for teachers, I mean, excuse me, for parents. Uh, parents have become teachers, as we know. Um, and so I'd love to hear about any efforts that are made to include them on any learning experiences, either currently or planned for this summer or the fall.
Yes, hi, Ms. Bowles. Thank you for your question. So yes, we have, uh, provided support to our parents. So first, the principals, they have hosted parent meetings utilizing Google Meets, um, just to assist them with the onboarding of being, um, of conducting distance learning at home and supported their students. Our parent liaisons, they've been collaborating with our school. Our parent liaisons, they've been collaborating with our school counselors to get through to our parents on helping them to know how to log in, how to check their parent portal, how to just remain in consistent communication. And also, we partnered with North Star Educational Consulting Company, and they've been doing a series of webinars every Friday for one hour and centered around the topics, you know, how do you set a schedule that works for you? How do you address your students or support your child's learning style? What is your child's learning style? And how do you monitor and track your students' performance while remaining in contact with your teacher? And then our technology department, they've consistently been doing professional learning sessions. And so as we go into next year, we've launched a task force. So we have a principal-led task force. And they are, they presented to us actually this morning. They're working, the principals are working with technology and some of our teacher leaders on a plan to support parents, teachers, students with greater use of our digital resources through our extended learning beyond the classroom. And so we haven't left our parents out. We've tried to really reach out to them as much as we can during this time, but definitely they are on the radar for the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. I'm excited to continue this conversation and keep learning more. And one of the things I'm thinking about is all of those actions sound great. I wonder if parents have access to find them if they miss a webinar or miss a presentation or miss a meeting? Is there like a one-stop shop that any of my colleagues and I can send our parents to? I'm on the site now and I'd love to see some of those like previous webinars listed as resources. Thanks again for your answer.
You're welcome. And Dr. Beasley forwarded responses to all of the questions, Ms. Bowles. And so what I'll do is I'll send you the link where we have been posting our recordings from the parent webinars on the homepage.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
No questions.
I have a question. It's Ms. Williams. For those kids that don't have the computers or the access, how are they getting a weekly thing and how do they turn them in?
Good evening, Ms. Williams. Thank you for your question. So it has been a challenge getting the learning to students who do not have consistent access to the resources. But I will say, our principals, they've been working really hard with all of their teachers and support staff to provide, if hard copies is the option, that varies at each school. I will say, we did not have a district-wide process for administering hard copies after the 14 days worth of learning that went home with students. But they've also been creative with working with their parents to take, to receive pictures of assignments from their teachers, as well as the teachers receiving images of the completed work. Some of our teachers have been making phone calls to allow students to explain their, over the phone. We do not have 100%, I will say, accessibility with all students, but their efforts have been commendable. So in terms of hard copy, it varies from school to school. And, but our students went home with their textbooks, many of them, as well as their consult texts. And so again, the phone calls home to assign, that has been one method. But we can't wait to be one-to-one so we can support all of our students more adequately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bowles?
Oh, I don't have a question. I've
All right.
loved our presentation.
All right, thank you. Come, Ms. Baker.
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. Like you said, there was, there's never been anything like this. It's a learning experience and I know that teachers and staff have done a lot to try to make this as easy as possible. So thank you for all of your work.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, Dr. Lee, thank you so much for all that you've done. My question is concerning our fragile children with emotional and mental and developmental delays. How have they been taken care of? Have they had therapists come into their homes? How have we taken care of those families?
And so, Ms. Johnson, I'm gonna make a statement, but then I'm gonna open it up to the team who can really speak to how they've been supported. But I will say, Dr. Simpson, even as we've been thinking through learning loss, he has consistently emphasized the social-emotional well-being of not only our students, but our staff members. So as we were rolling out our plan, we're working closely with Dr. Duncan just on how do we provide that support? But I want to pause and let another team member think how we've supported our students going through extremities during this time and their families.
Thank you.
I would suggest that Dr. Nunez and Ms. Smith, Department of Exceptional Students, I would suggest that they share as well. Dr. Call, you ought to be, may be there as well to share.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, community members, staff members. This is Dr. Nunez. In terms of supporting, regarding supporting our students as they have gone through this pandemic and living their new normal, our Support Services Team has been very, very active at making sure that they are communicating with the students and families and with teachers. As a matter of fact, this morning, we had a very good meeting with Dr. Beasley where we were sharing how, for example, the Behavior Intervention Specialists are actually going into classrooms and communicating with teachers to support students as they are going through this pandemic. Counselors are also very, very active in the classrooms and supporting students and receiving messages, phone calls, and making contact with families out there, as well as social workers. The psychologists in our team, they are looking at ways of evaluating the students. That is a challenge, not just in Clayton County, but nationwide because psychological evaluations require a certain level of contact. And even though we can perform psychological, we should be able to perform psychological evaluations virtually, there is a level of confidentiality and level of care that we need to have to conduct those evaluations virtually. In the area of special education, the work has been tremendous ensuring that students are receiving all the supports and the accommodations that they need to receive. And that, and still, you know, we deal with the flexibility, hoping with more flexibility from the federal, state government, but the reality is that the students need the support that the occupational therapists and the OTs and the physical therapies and the speech therapies are working tirelessly out there as well with parents. So the support in all areas is, has been provided and is being provided. We are very proud of the work that all the support staff members are doing out there. And they are in constant communication, as well as the nurses talking about health services. The nurses are performing, conducting surveys out there to evaluate the needs of the students as they come back. So it's, it's great work going on in our district.
Dr. Beasley, this is Trina Smith. Members of the board, I didn't know if you wanted me to add to that, but the Department of Exceptional Students, specific to students with developmental disabilities, you asked, Ms. Johnson? We are providing physical therapy, occupational therapy, music therapy, everything in those Google Classrooms and virtually. So we are not going into homes because that would be a difficult situation for our staff and we would do not want to put them at risk, but have set up all of our staff in virtual environments to provide support services through the Google Meet, through all of our online support services. In many situations, our OTs and PTs are providing therapy simultaneously for some of our students. And for those students who have intellectual disabilities even, our teachers have their own Google Classrooms and are teaching live every day and they are doing amazing things. So when we talk about teacher appreciation, I give all of our teachers a big hand clap.
Amen. Thank you. Is that from, is that everyone from the team? Because we can share that information by email if.
I think that's.
Okay. Dr. Anderson, do you have any comments? Dr. Anderson? All right, I don't, I'm not hearing anything from, I haven't heard anything from Dr. Anderson. I just want to thank.
Ms. Corrie.
Okay.
Hey, I just, I'm fine. I've kind of talked to Dr. Beasley, been talking to him. We're talking to him and you. So a lot of my questions have been answered. I just want to thank everybody for what they're doing with our students. Also, if we get a chance, can we go back to item five on the adoption of the agenda? We need to go back and adopt the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So be fine.
We just went on by everything. Well, sorry, you all. I tell you right now, I'm not even a C minus. But anyway, I'm going to go ahead and just, I want to thank everybody, the whole team, every department for what you're doing. Someone asked about what our teachers are doing, hard copies, whatever. I've seen, I follow everybody on Twitter that I can. I know at some schools, teachers have been in the building. They have been making hard copies. I know at Riverdale Elementary School, I see them coming through the car lane, probably on a weekly basis, getting hard copies for the elementary students. And as I said, all of the departments are working very hard with this pandemic. And I've got to just recognize one of our teachers at Lake Ridge, I can't remember her name, but that teacher actually drove over to a complex with three of her students and sat in the parking lot and helped those students with great social distancing to help them with their assignments. And if I'm not mistaken, the teacher actually is a cancer survivor. So her immune system was already compromised, but the fact that she took it upon herself to care about her students, going to their environment to help them out. Everyone is doing the best that they can. We don't have a blueprint here. Right now, we're not perfect. We're trying to meet with parents and I'm sure that Ms. Bowles asked a question about what are we doing as far as in service for our parents. I know on the agenda, we do have the, to buy devices for students. And I know that once we buy those devices, we'll be having some type of staff development or in-service for all of our parents. Because we're not just going to hand out devices and not ask them what to do. But I just thank everybody for the wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
I want to go back to the adoption. Our attorney is President, Mr. Doyle, and our administrative assistant, Ms. Sherry Smith, is there as well. So let me go back and, Ms. Dr. Anderson, I'm gonna move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, you'll second it. And can I just, I think we can see everybody on this one. Can we just all raise our hands and say that we, for the adoption of the agenda? Do I have unanimous? Yes.
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 We have a unanimous vote. Please forgive me, you all. It's hard.
Thank you.
I'm looking at an iPad. I'm looking at my computer, at my.
Me too.
I wish we had the money to give y'all a big bonus, guys. Who in the classroom that would be, it would just be awful for me. Okay, we've done all of that. Okay. So we can move on now to the governmental relations. I think, are we finished with Dr. Lee and her presentation?
I think we are.
Okay.
Okay, so we can, as you said, we can move on to governmental relations and school leadership, Dr. Smith and Dr. Simpson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Did y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, colleagues and community. On behalf of myself, Dr. Ralph Simpson and the team, they have provided research involvement from students, parents, principals relative to virtual and traditional graduations. And we have referenced dates, cost, location, timeframes in our report update to the board. And we stand ready to answer any questions or concerns that you may have at this time.
All right, I'll start back. I'm gonna ask everybody, before you start talking, please let everybody mute their mic with the exception of starting with Ms. Bowles and then we'll come on down. And as I said, Dr. Anderson and I will be the last two if there are.
Ms. Bowles? Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Dr. Smith and Dr. Simpson. My only question right now is, I love the plan. I really like that we're responding to what the students and families have asked for. Is the deposit on the Georgia International Convention Center refundable?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Actually, we have not submitted a payment, only an invoice. And we have, we have worked out and we have still got a strong relationship with the Georgia National Convention Center. They are very understanding of our circumstances.
Thank you, sir. That was my only question about graduations. I'm excited.
No question, Madam Chair. Merry Christmas.
I have a question. If we do the graduations outside, are we gonna limit the amount of guests that they can bring or is anybody?
Yes, ma'am. In the plan, if we are allowed to do the traditional graduations outside, we will be participating in social distancing relative to the ingress and egress of individuals coming in and out and also the seating. Therefore, the capacity of the stadium will be cut by a third. So that will require us to issue a limited number of tickets to the students.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Burles, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Come on down, Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker?
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. Since we're going to be limited on the amount of people who can join the graduation itself, and many people have large families, are we going to be able to stream this for other family members or long-distance family members?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. We've done that for the most recent years and we will continue to do so for 2020.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I, as I looked at the schedules of the graduations, I'm guessing that the board members will go to our high schools, quote, unquote, and whatever my, whatever high school's in my district, that's the graduation that I will attend. Since there'll be three happening at one time, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There will be a limited amount of graduations, five or six, I think, would be possible for board members to attend. And I'm sure you'll select ones within your district and even if there's an opportunity to attend others, it'd be your decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Straker?
I'm sorry, no questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Dr. Anderson?
No questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, Dr. Smith, Dr. Beasley, I just want to make, want you, want us to make one thing clear to the public that our plan is to have a graduation in the stadium, a traditional graduation. A virtual graduation is also on the table. Can you just give us a little bit, explain a little bit more about one versus the other, what happens?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Our initial plans were to do what similar districts were going to do after they met with some opposition from the community and have a virtual graduation during the regular scheduled time, starting on May 21st. And that was going to be our original plan with the scheduled traditional graduation. And that was going to be our original plan with the scheduled traditional graduations starting late June, June 25th, 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 26th and 27th. To be specific, with one of those days being a makeup and also three opportunities for uh, a traditional graduation to happen in the month of July, leading our way to the end. And, uh, but after meeting with our principals, who in turn met with, uh, parents and students, uh, they convinced us to, uh, come up with a different option. And the option that we landed on was going ahead and, and, and conducting and structuring the virtual graduations. The students have been participating in that during the past week or two. And we will have a virtual graduation ready to roll out at a moment's notice within the next two or three weeks. But the decision is to air the virtual graduation in the event the May 25th traditional graduation would not be able to take place. And that decision will be contingent on conditions, uh, from the governor and others. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, that's, that is the reason why we changed up. It is a community-driven decision that we have provided to the superintendent to share with the board for consideration.
Okay, I just want, uh, everyone to be clear that in the event that we can't face-to-face, that would be our backup.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other comments, Doctor Beasley, regarding graduation?
Well, I think, uh, Doctor Smith and, and you, you have said everything that I would, uh, share. I just want our parents to know to just, uh, that we're doing our best to give our kids, we heard their, their feedback, they'd like a face-to-face. We're doing our best to respect that and to, uh, plan for that. However, the virtual graduations, as, as already shared, is, is our alternate in case we can't do the face-to-face. But we're going to continue to work to give them exactly what they would like to have. We want our seniors to know that we appreciate them, we congratulate them, that they're special to us. And we want them to end their K-12 experience, uh, in the best way possible with a, with a uh, graduation that they can, a memorable graduation that they can always, always share with others um, as they matriculate to post-secondary options.
Thank you. I want to also thank all of the principals at our high schools because I have, as I say, I follow most of them on social media and I've seen some really special uh, videos that have been shared for our seniors and, uh, things that they place, uh, along the schools. I know that, uh, some of them are coming to pick up cap gowns and the board would like to know, wants you to know that we, um, want a very memorable occasion for you. And, you know, of course, you know, we wish we could have it at the, uh, Georgia International Convention Center, but this pandemic has superseded everything. So thank you all so much for your work, team. Clayton County Public Schools, you've been on it. Okay, Doctor Beasley, back to you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we'll go to the, the next item. And we'll have, uh, Chief Trey Wick will give us an update for school safety and security.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, colleagues and community. I've prepared an executive summary for your review and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have relative to, uh, safety and security.
At this time, board members, do we have any questions for safety and security?
I emailed my questions. Um, good evening, Chief Trey Wick, and so I will just, um, look out for some more of those responses. I'd love to hear more about the training programs and I'm excited to see that there are upcoming training dates for all of our.
Yes, ma'am.
Do, are there any board members that have any questions? All right, uh, Chief Trey Wick, hearing none, I thank you for your report and I'm looking forward to, uh, the implementation of our pilot schools and the safety of study that we have coming aboard.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think anybody else has any questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're on the consent agenda and I'm going to, I'm still gonna turn this over to Doctor Beasley. I want all the board members to realize that, uh, once everyone presents, at the end, we will vote on the consent. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Doctor Beasley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. So we have, uh, the, the regular monthly, monthly items. So we'll start with our financial report, Ms. Benton.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board of Education, Doctor Beasley and community. Um, the Board of Education has been provided an executive summary for, um, a COVID-19 update. And so I'll just kind of hit at a very high level some of the things that I want to highlight um, as it relates to, um, the Board of Education finances related to COVID-19. So I want to highlight, um, that currently we're seeing what I'm calling lost revenue. Um, obviously, as we've had a shelter in place, we are seeing about a 13% decline in slots revenue. Uh, we also, and you, and you will notice, the board will notice on the financial reports, um, you'll see that our nutrition funds are also down. Uh, we typically receive about 3.8, 3.9 million, uh, on a monthly basis. And this particular report for March, uh, we're showing 1.8 million. And so, um, when the board receives April financial reports, you'll see the full impact since we haven't been operating at 100%. Um, and we will continue to feel, um, I believe, the impact, especially as it relates to slots over the next several, uh, months. And we'll just kind of see how the economy, um, responds um, based on some of the, um, quarantine and shelter in place that we've had as a state and as a nation. And so the third piece, um, the, I'm sorry, the second item that I want to just highlight um, for the Board of Education and also the community. Um, as the board is aware, the President of the United States signed the CARES Act on March the 27th, um, 2020, which is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. And so the, um, Georgia Department of Education filed for funding for all K-12 schools um, in the state of Georgia. And on April the 30th, we were informed that, um, the United States, um, Department of Education, they approved the, um, request for stimulus funding. And so Clayton County Public Schools share is, um, 17.45 million dollars. Um, the last item that I, that I want to highlight, we were, uh, I would say knee-deep into the budget process. And so I presented to the Board of Education on March the 14th, um, some budget items, um, as we look towards FY21 budget. Um, as the board is aware, the, uh, legislative session was suspended on March the 13th. And so we really haven't heard um, very much about the governor's budget because, you know, they've also been sheltering in place. However, we did receive a, um, a notice from the, um, Georgia Department of Education on Friday, um, stating that as we began to plan for our budget, because we are required by state law um, to have a balanced budget by June 30th, 2020, or June 30th of every year. And so, um, they provided some parameters. And so what we're hearing is that there's going to be a 14% reduction um, in state revenue as well as state grants, um, from the state of Georgia. And so I've done a projection and so part of um, what we're looking at, um, is about a $60 million reduction in our revenue for, um, the FY21 budget. Obviously, um, from the finance side of the House and also, um, the superintendent and the leadership, um, at the school district, we are looking at uh, all options, exploring all options to reduce expend, expenditures so that we can have a balanced budget. Um, but right now, um, the projection is 60 million. Um, you know, obviously, we will, um, look at furlough days only if absolutely necessary. But we're gonna have to make up the 60 million somehow in order to get a balanced budget. Are there any questions that the board may have on the COVID-19 financial report?
Ms. Benton, it may be helpful to share with everyone, uh, about, uh, the strength of our, our fund balance, which will, if we have to, which will help us during a reduction in revenue.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Um, so there's one thing that, that, that I'm very comfortable with. I think that the leadership and the, um, um, the staff at Clayton County Public Schools, we know how to tighten our belts. Um, when I joined the organization in 2018, that's exactly what, um, the district was doing, was tightening, tightening uh, its belt, looking at how we can, um, save money and spend less money. And as a result of that, um, our fund balance is very strong, um, as I shared with the Board of Education in March. Um, it is a very strong fund balance. Obviously, it's much more than the, um, the 15%. Um, so I'm not overly stressed out because we have been building that fund balance over the last um, two years. And so now we're at a point that we know how to dip into it. Um, but we are in a good position. Some districts don't have, you know, the type of fund balance that we have.
Are there any questions, board member?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Am I going out of order?
It's, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, couple of questions. Um, um, Ms. Benton, um, obviously, we're gonna experience some, some type of loss in our finances. What ideas, what models, who are you talking to? What kind of, um, analysis are you doing to figure out where we're going to cut to, um, to make up that deficit?
So, um, Doctor Beasley and I have been, um, talking over the last several weeks on potential options. Um, and so I had, um, provided a scenario of about a 12% um, reduction as well as a 24% reduction. So I provided, um, actually, I looked at three and it was the, um, base case scenario, middle case scenario, which was the 12% reduction. And worst case scenario, which was the 24% reduction. And so I landed on those percentages based on the Great Recession that we experienced in 2008, 2009. And then I added a few percentage points and that's how it got to 12. And then I doubled it for 24%. Um, but the Georgia Department of Education came out with a 14% reduction because obviously, uh, where we are now, um, based on the projection is much worse than where we were, not just talking about as a school district, but as a nation, um, much worse than what it was in 2008, 2009. Um, so in terms of, um, where we can cut, um, I went back and I looked at our, um, 2018 financials to just kind of see how we spent our money in 2018. And I'm, I've also analyzed how we've been spending our funds in 2019 um, to see where they, there are some potential savings. And so I think this is, it's a great time for, um, everybody to be, the team to be creative in terms of how, um, we do education.
And, and speaking about creat, creativity, we obviously are gonna move into a new model of education when it comes to online learning. Um, can you tell me, or I, I guess you could get back to me, um, some other day, on how much do we, do we, um, um, allocate towards textbooks and, and things that we may be shifting uh, away from because of the new online learning models that we're, um, obviously gonna have to go towards?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that someplace where we possibly can pick up with the, um, with, with, with our funds?
Wow, that's a really good question. And I, I would say for textbooks, there, there are options. However, um, uh, I'm sure that my colleagues in teaching and learning will, would probably say a little different. You know, they would say that our students need the books. And I think that for online learning, you still have to buy that digital, uh, version, so to speak. Um, but obviously, there is some room there. There is some room. I don't think that, uh, we can not spend, you know, uh, anything on textbooks.
Gotcha.
Mr. Striker, as far as our textbooks are concerned, you know, we generally, we, I don't think that we're doing any textbook adoptions. I may be incorrect. But generally, we do have consumable books at our, uh, primary levels. And I'm sure that we would still purchase those regardless. Because, uh, even with digital learning, we're not, uh, we're looking at not necessarily sending home our computers, uh, certain grade level. So some books we have to purchase.
Is, is, um, is Mr. Smith gonna be presenting this, this evening? Rod Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So I, if, it just, just this question for later, so I don't have to speak. Um, if he can chime in on, on that thought of, of, um, um, online learning versus the textbooks, if he can just give his opinion when his time comes up. Thank you very much.
Right, but either way, we, you know, there are still some, generally, elementary books are consumable books. So we're, I don't think we, you know, that, that would really probably be the biggest expense. But as I said, teaching and learning.
Cause I, I don't know a kid, I don't know a kid today that reads a textbook, not one, at six years old.
Mrs. Striker, that's, that's part of our conversation.
Right.
Uh, because, uh, Ms. Benton is absolutely right. The, the textbook publishers have gotten smart. You're gonna pay for the book whether you get the book hard copy or digital. It's going to be the same price. But I think we can get a little smarter and decide, you know, if, let's say, you have 3,000 kids in the third grade. Instead of buying 3,000 digital textbooks, why not buy only so many and put them in the library? And if the student needs to check out that textbook, then they can. The goal.
Exactly my point.
If, if we're doing it digitally, there may be a need, uh, depending on how well we use the technology, there may be a, a less of a need to actually open that digital textbook. Depending on how we use the digital learning, uh, environment, uh, which we may need, the textbooks probably just don't need 3,000 copies of.
Correct.
So we, we'll just have to continue to have those conversations.
Doctor Beasley, my question is, when I'm talking about consumable books, do we, are do we, are we not using consumable books in, in our primary grades?
I believe, I, I know we are. Doctor Lee is there. Doctor Lee can respond.
Yes, yes, Ms. Corrie. We are using consumables, um, in our, um, elementary and high school grade levels.
Right, so some, I think, we can save the money, but something we're going to have to purchase because, you know, we're not going to get this thing. I mean, we're all just this, this new plan of action. Cause we don't even know it, where we'll be at when the beginning of the school year starts, whether we'll be in a building or in the same situation that we're in right now. But I will, since we started on the end with, with Mr. Striker, let's come back that way and, uh, the next person.
I, I don't have any, anything to say. Thank you.
Okay, what about you, Ms. Baker?
No questions at this time.
All right, Ms. Burrow.
No questions at this time.
Ms. Williams.
No questions.
And Mr. Christmas. Ms. Ms. Bowles.
I actually do. Good evening, Ms. Benton. Um, you answered my question in your presentation, which was really helpful. I'm curious about this gap and you couldn't possibly know because it's still happening and it's happening to all of us. So I appreciate you, um, sharing that you calculated a projection. My question is, you know, the projection you mentioned is about $60 million of a shortfall. And I want to understand the gap. Um, is it, is that your projection with the 14% cut from the Georgia DOE? And I think Doctor Beasley followed up with a comment about our healthy fund balance and that's what I want to understand. So if we, if, let's say this projected $60 million is the shortfall we have to deal with, are we or are we not in an emergency to resolve that? Or are we safe? We just want to be sure, um, we are noting that revenue's going down, so spending should go down. Can you help me understand the gap the way you explained it?
Yes, um, so, um, they're, they're very separate but yet very interrelated. Um, so the $60 million, 14%, uh, about 50 million of that is from the state. And so obviously, that's just directly from the, um, the Department of Education, you know, based on our current, uh, earnings, QBE earnings and our state grants that we receive from the state of it, um, the Department of Education, so 50 million. And so the, uh, the remaining, now, um, the 10 million, um, obviously, we receive about 30. obviously, we receive about thirty percent of revenue from our local property taxes. And so the concern is, is that while property values are going up, just like during the Great Recession, that residents may be a little slower with paying their property taxes, especially if they're not employed. And so because of that, it's not lost revenue forever, but we may potentially not receive it when we need it, November, December, January, and February. And so that's where it's coming from. And so as, you know, as Dr. Beasley mentioned, the fund balance, our fund balance is very healthy. So again, separate but yet very interrelated, so that if we had to dip into the fund balance to cover some of the shortfall, the money is there.
Thank you so much.
But, you know, we don't know if the recession will be six months, or if it's going to be twelve months, or is it going to be two years? So, you know, we may need it for FY22 also. I don't, you know, we don't know.
Absolutely. Thank you for this.
You're welcome.
Dr. Anderson?
Ms. Benton, in your presentation, you said that we were at, you said that this, well, this pandemic and the issues that we're having financially with this pandemic are a lot different than, you know, when we had the recession, when we had our recession last time. I just thought about it, and I know like a lot of other districts are talking about it. I don't want to cut anyone, any of our teachers or anything like that. But do you think we would have to look at furlough days? Because I know a lot of districts are talking about that at this time.
You know, it's certainly an option. Furlough days are an option. But, you know, I think it's our position, or the superintendent's position, is that that's an absolutely last resort. That's not something that.
And I just wanted to make sure, because a lot of people fear that. And I just want to make sure that we make it clear that it is a last resort. We're not looking at furlough days. We're, you know, we're just going to work with what we have. We have a great budget, and, you know, we can go with that from here. We can go with that from here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Benton, I think that you have given a great presentation. I do want our employees to know that prior to this pandemic, as you stated, you had, you had given a presentation to the board, and we were actually looking at trying to select a group of our employees to make them the highest paid in the metro area.
Yes, we were.
We, everything, you know, right now, we don't, we don't know what to expect. We won't really know how our budget will look until the General Assembly resumes in June. And at this time, I'm just glad that our fund balance is very healthy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm just going to proceed on with some of the other reports. And these are the standard reports that the Board of Education received month to month. And as we've already discussed, our fund balance, as of the end of March, is one hundred and thirty-seven million. And so I know that, you know, we discussed early on a few months ago that we will see the fund balance gradually decline. And so last month, it was a hundred and forty million, and so this month is a hundred and thirty-seven million at the end of March. And so we'll see it further decline more in April and also May and June, but it'll still be at a pretty healthy level. Our expenditures for the month of March was thirty-six million. Our revenue was about thirty-four million. And since we have been sheltering in place, we are seeing just a little savings from our utilities. And so not as high as we would have expected them had we been operating as normal. Are there any questions that the board may have on our finances? Okay. So I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I said hearing none. Let's go forward.
Okay. Let's move directly to the SLOSS report. And so the information that the board has, you can see that there's a cumulative, a monthly cumulative in the average collection to date for SLOSS revenue. And so as the board can see, and I already mentioned it in the COVID-19 report, you can see that SLOSS collections are also down. And so I'm sure it's directly tied to the pandemic and also, you know, to the Delta grant. But, you know, what we would have expected. So then, if there are no questions on the SLOSS report, I'll move directly to the purchasing report. So the board has four reviews.
I have a question on SLOSS.
Oh, sure.
And it's more directed towards Dr. Beasley. Dr. Beasley, as you know that, as she just stated, the SLOSS balance is slowly declining. SLOSS is basically used for capital expenditures. Based off of this situation that we're in, are we making a kind of a shift in how much we're spending on these buildings and construction and other things that the SLOSS was going to be used for? I know it's too soon to make those decisions, but could you take me through your thinking process?
Well, I will, and Ronic will be prepared to share. But as you know, we remember that the SLOSS funds come in over a five-year period, and so we have the timeline out all the projects, right?
Right.
And so with that being stated, we never do all the projects at one time. We, you know, it just depends on where we are on the timeline. So with that being stated, there will be some opportunities where, you know, we'll just have to, as a board, decide if there are certain projects that we need to possibly delay, depending on the revenues, or kick down the road, if you will, to the next SLOSS. But we'll make those decisions, or we'll bring those recommendations to the board as we determine the impact of the revenues as we get through this situation. Realizing that, you know, if a project has already started, we've got to possibly, I would say, you've got to complete that project. But we may, can acknowledge the lack or the loss of revenue, which may impact the number of projects on the list. And so that just requires us to, just to make some strategic decisions as to which ones really have to be done, which ones may can be delayed until the next SLOSS or until we see an uptick in the revenue, which we'll eventually see an uptick in the revenue. But we just don't know how long that will last in light of this five-year period. So yes, yes, strategic decisions as we monitor the data, look at the revenue collection, figure out exactly even the impact that the economy is going to have on the price, the costing, the cost of a project. And Ronic is uniquely positioned to help us figure out exactly what decisions we'll have to make, whether it be delay a project, remove a project, or kick a project to the next SLOSS, SLOSS seven. So, but I'll let Ronic share if he will, when he comes to the mic.
Go ahead, Ms. Benton.
The purchasing report. So the board has four reviews, the March 2020 purchasing report. Reports A and B, they're for information only. And Report C are the contracts that are over fifty thousand dollars, and they require the Board of Education approval. Are there any questions?
Question, board members, regarding the purchasing report?
I kind of had a question about the SLOSS report in mind with the discussion. Quick question, Ms. Benton. When it comes to some of the state and federal waivers that have been granted for flexibility with spending to respond to the pandemic, a lot of it's Title I funds. Do you see, or have you heard of, any waivers that allow flexibility for the allocation of SLOSS funds? Just listening to us think about pushing projects back, but they only can be used for capital projects per the Georgia Constitution. Has anybody, have you heard anything about waivers for that spending?
So spending SLOSS funds on other things besides capital projects?
That is correct. It's been a long time, believe, that we sometimes wish we could use SLOSS funds for other things instead of new buildings. But when we think about our technology needs, our mental health needs, some of the capacity needs, PD for teachers and families, you know, just wondering if you've ever heard or seen anything like it, or advocacy for those efforts.
No. No.
I can.
Oh, go on, Dr. Beasley.
I can share, you know, Ms. Bowles, at the last, during the last legislative session last year, that would have been 2019, there was a bill that was introduced wherein they were asking for that type of flexibility to use SLOSS funds for other, for other things, if you will. But it did not, it did not pass. It did not even, I don't know if it even, I don't remember if it even made it out of committee. It would, there were just so many concerns that districts would start using the funds collected through SLOSS instead of focusing on capital improvements. So right now, by Constitution, unless something changes, there are no so-called waivers for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions regarding the purchasing report? That's what we're on. All right, hearing none. I believe that's it, Ms. Benton, for your report.
Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Thank you. And at this time, Ronic will come with the SLOSS construction report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley. The board has received the SLOSS construction update for the month of April. Seven payments were made totaling five point two million dollars. There were no change orders executed under this period. You have heard that there has been a reduction in SLOSS revenues. In January, we received three point seven million, in February, three point five million, and March, in three point seven million. We have prepared a cash flow analysis to see what impact this would have on ongoing projects. If we maintain a collection of three point seven, with the twelve million dollars in the account and an additional fifteen million that we should be receiving from the Georgia DOE, we should be able to weather the storm for ongoing commitments. However, it is too early to determine what the total impact would be, given that we don't know how long the duration of it. But I'm confident that we are able to meet our current commitments. At this time, we'd gladly ask any questions the board may have regarding ongoing projects.
All right. I'm going to follow back up with Mr. Striker's comments and with some of the comments that Benton made. Right now, we're not, we know that we're probably in a recession. We know that the SLOSS collection is down. The next thing that I see on our project and design is the College and Career Academy. Now, I really think that as a board, I think that we really need to look at the projects that we have been designing. Even though I know you, Mr. Joseph, you think that we can weather the storm, I would really not want to gamble on this. I really want us to do the College and Career Academy, but I'm just wondering, should we maybe postpone or think, think before we start building? I think that we've already given, the architect, I think already has something in design. Is that correct?
Correct. So what I mean by weathering the storm, and what I mean by ongoing, are the projects that are under construction. I agree wholeheartedly that the projects that are under design, we would think twice before we commit the board to those projects. So the only commitment are the design costs. But so agreed, until the total impact is complete, I don't intend this to present any new projects at this time.
Okay, thank you. That'd be my comment. At this time, do we have, I'm going to go back to Mr. Striker. I think this might be an area where you wanted to make comments.
In regards to?
SLOSS money projects, I believe that's what you.
Yeah, no, I think Dr. Beasley, yeah, he tapped on it, and I also have to say that I'm totally in line with your thinking.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? I'm starting at Mr. Striker. Ms. Johnson?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Baker?
No.
I'm going down to Ms. Burrows.
No, not at this time.
Ms. Williams?
No, no questions.
Mr. Christmas?
None.
Ms. Bowles?
No questions, no comments.
Okay, Dr. Anderson? Maybe not. All right.
No questions, no comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Joseph?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ronic. And next, we'll have Dr. Wilson with the personnel changes report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Beasley and community members. The personnel changes report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of March thirteenth through April 21st, 2020. As of the report, there were four hundred, I'm sorry, as of the report, there were four hundred twenty-four vacancies. For the same period last year, there were four hundred fifteen vacancies. Ms. Bowles, your question via email. Currently, we are utilizing all applicable PSC and Department of Education waivers that are available to us. Presently, we have one hundred thirty recommendations for teachers pending a background check. If and when the background checks are cleared, that will bring the number of vacancies to about three hundred. Our principals are still conducting virtual interviews as all districts are having to do at this point. Our principals are really to be applauded during this time because they've really stepped up and taken the lead on attracting teachers and other students to their schools and selling their schools. Some have come up with creative videos selling their schools and tours of their schools. So they're to be commended. Additionally, in reference to non-traditional candidates, who may not be certified or education majors, we do, we are, we'll continue with hiring those individuals if they're recommended by a principal via a waiver that's issued by the PSC. And finally, I'd like to note that we are in the final stages of finalizing remote notarization, which is an option due to COVID-19, which will include a preliminary background check that will allow us to move a little further in the hiring process until we can actually get the fingerprint in done. I just want to thank Equity and Compliance, Safety and Security for assisting with in that process to get that done. That concludes the personnel changes report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'll start down on the end with Ms. Bowles. Do you have any other questions?
Good evening, Dr. Wilson. Thank you so much for including some of the responses to my email questions in your presentation. I appreciate that, and I think I just want to encourage, you know, a strong affirmation, not just to be welcome to non-traditional candidates, but to pursue them outright when possible. If we have vacancies and there are people who want to teach but feel like they're not welcome in the classroom, due to any misconception about, you know, needing certification, I just want them to know that we're actively hiring and recruiting. And I think college grads and career changers are a great place to start, especially at a time like this. So I'm glad it's a priority and excited to hear more.
Thank you. Noted.
Mr. Christmas?
No questions, Madam Chair.
No questions, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Burrows?
No questions.
Baker?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
No questions. Thank you.
Dr. Wilson, I'm really feeling the Falcons logo.
I'm not. Uh-oh.
Oh.
We're just going to, we're not going to worry about Ms. Williams at this time. Thank you for all that you guys are doing as far as getting teachers in. I know it's hard, it's hard to do. I know it's a lot of virtual meetings and, you know, and I want to thank our principals for all that they're doing, and that's it.
All right. Dr. Wilson, thank you all for the great job that you're doing. And the question, again, on the non-traditional, that's why we have our TAP program. We have for anybody that's interested in joining the best profession in all the world, please look on our website. I know that you've been posting our TAP meetings, and we welcome you to come to the best profession in the whole wide world. So I have nothing to say. So, uh, I, I have nothing to say other than thank you for the great job that you're doing.
Ms. Goree?
Yes.
If I may add, uh, we should acknowledge our TAP program is recognized as one of the best.
Yeah.
Preparation programs in the state for, uh, for non-traditional candidates. And so. And, and our data suggests and tells us that our TAP candidates do very, very, very well in our classrooms. So we're very proud and thank Dr. Duncan and her team for, uh, for that university, if you will, that they have over there at the PLC.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that at this time, Ms. Smith, I, I'm trying to make sure I'm following the agenda correctly. I think at this time, we can vote. This is an action item.
Yes, ma'am.
We can vote on this, uh, on the, uh, consent agenda. So can I get a motion consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we, um, accept the consent agenda as presented.
This is Mary. I second it.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Baker. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. I will start with Ms. Bowles. Yes. Okay. Mr. Chris, okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Striker?
I vote the affirmative, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And that would be a yes for me. So that is a unanimous vote, nine, zero, that we accept the consent agenda.
Right.
All right. Uh, we don't have anything listed on the board matters. Uh, the next, uh, items that we have. This is agenda, I'm gonna turn it back over to you, Dr. Beasley.
Thank you, Ms. Goree. Uh, Ms. Goree, at this time, we'll have Dr. Wiley will come and present relative to our magnet programs.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and Superintendent Beasley. The first item that I have does cover the magnet programs. And in the continuation of developing choices for Clayton County Public Schools students, the following programs have been identified to support existing high school programs. And/or existing middle school programs. They are King Elementary School Botany and Zoology. West Clayton Elementary School STEAM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Mathematics. North Cut Elementary School, uh, Medical Sciences. Oliver Elementary School STEM. James A. Jackson Elementary School Political Leadership with Entrepreneurship and North Clayton Middle School, which is STEM. All schools will, will eventually become magnet schools using the timeline that I have submitted to you. And I, I'll take any questions at this time.
Are there any questions? I'll start with you, Ms. Bowles.
No questions. I'm really excited about all things choice magnet and options in our district. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
No questions.
Ms. Burrows?
No question.
No, no questions from me at this time.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Um, I have no questions. I'm just excited about the different programs that are gonna be coming on board.
Right. Mr. Striker?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Dr. Anderson?
Uh, Dr. Wiley, I just have one question. As we develop the programs in our elementary, are we gonna tie them on up to, to our middle and high schools?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're trying to do at this point to, um, kind of slow down, figure out what's needed in our school system. And to make sure that we have a K-12 program for each thing.
Okay, cuz I just, I don't wanna, I wanna start them off, you know, like I said, we do it in elementary. And then just keep it going for them for middle and high school. So thank you. I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, Dr. Wiley, I want to commend you all. Thank you so much because I'm glad to see. That, uh, we have King Elementary, West Clayton, North Cut and Oliver, and North Clayton Middle that are. Right in the same area that going into, to the STEAM, uh, magnets. And I know we have the aviation magnet at the North Clayton Middle School, those are feeder schools and North Clayton High School. So I'm so glad to, to, to see that we're doing that on the north end of the, uh, of the county. And I think Jackson Elementary School is a great addition for the political science, especially feeding into, uh, that, you know, they're in the. The feeder pattern for Jonesboro High School. So, uh, you're commended. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions, I'll move to my next agenda item, which is the voluntary desegregation resolution. As you may be aware, the most recent research today state that public schools are largely segregated by family, social, economic status, race, and ethnicity. It also reveals that attending racially diverse schools is beneficial to all students. And is associated with smaller test score gaps between students at different racial backgrounds. It is because of this research that the U.S. Department of Education requires. An involuntary desegregation plan or a voluntary desegregation plan for any school district seeking funding. Through the Magnet Schools Assistance Program. Our plan was written with the current status of magnet programs in mind. One of the major components of magnet programs is to eliminate the isolation of minority groups. Clayton County Public Schools minority groups are Asian, white, and Hispanic. Currently, only 10% of the magnet enrollment represents the Hispanic population. Our magnet programs enrollment is currently 23% economically disadvantaged. The district's goal is to ensure magnet programs represent the overall district demographics. The district can accomplish this goal through strategic recruitment as outlined in the, in the plan. Therefore, we are asking, the superintendent is asking and recommending board approval of our voluntary desegregation. Desegregation plan and the board resolution so that we can apply for the Magnet Schools Assistance Program grant.
Are there any que-
Madam Chair, this is Clem. I was just gonna ask if the board needed to also vote on Dr. Wiley's first agenda item.
Well, uh, yes, we, we are going to vote on it, and I was, I, I, I was just about to text you an answer. Uh, we can, uh, either vote on each item after it's presented or do it all at the, at the end. So we've been do, I, I was just gonna do it as the consent agenda, but we can, but I, I, but, but we can't stop right now.
E- either is fine. Either works fine.
Okay, so I guess, what, what would the board like? Would you all like to just go ahead and have everything presented and vote at one time? Or do we wanna take, I think we have about five things.
Well, Madam Chair, can we just vote on it after each, can we vote on it after, um.
That's what.
Can we vote on that each, uh, if, after the agreement?
That's what I'm asking. Do you want to do a vote for each one, or do you want to vote individually?
Madam Chair, I wanna vote for each thing individually if possible, or at, or move, or pull the i-politics.
Individually.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, there are two people that want to vote individually.
I would like to vote on the whole list.
Hold it, hold it. Uh, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm just going to, if, if someone wants to pull it, we'll just pull it right now since we, I have, we have it listed. And I'm gonna do it as a consent agenda, let everybody present, and we'll vote at the end. All right. Do we have any questions regarding the desegregation resolution?
My question is, is this, um, directly tied to our ability to apply for grants for magnet programs? Um, and, or is it, and, and like a formality? Or will this look different in practice? And if so, what is the difference in practice versus what we do now?
I am hoping both. Um, it is a requirement for the Magnet Schools Assistant Program Grant for the federal government. But through writing this and going through the process for five years, um, the grant outlines that. They're hoping that it will become practice and become something that we look at every day. Because, um, like I stated earlier, magnet programs, we are supposed to be looking at how we're isolating our minority groups. Uh, we started looking at our Hispanic population two years ago. And that is why we've had more application assistance days with interpreters there. And the reason we are, um. We're translating all of our documents. So we're moving in that direction. So it really won't be new. We will be enhancing what we're already doing to make sure all students have an equal opportunity.
Thanks for your answer. I'm obviously not gonna vote against desegregation, but my hope is that we don't just say we're doing it. I hope that yields something different in practice. I appreciate you focusing on our Hispanic, Asian, and white students to be sure there's equity.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Back to Ms. Wiley's point, and if we look at our, at the population of, of Clayton County. Uh, we do have underserved, even though when I, my question was about the word desegregation. We're looking at the fact that we are not including certain minority groups. Right now, we have, the, the problem is a language barrier. Most of our parents probably aren't applying for the magnet schools that are across the county. Because it's, we have the, the language barrier. So I, I truly, uh, am grateful for the resolution. And the information that you have presented to us, Dr. Wiley.
Thank you.
Okay. We can move on to the naming of North Clayton, uh, excuse me, South Clayton Elementary.
We are, no problem. Through this executive summary, we are seeking permission to administer the surveys to name the South Clayton Elementary School. Once the survey is completed, a report will be sent to the board for your review. And for your approval of the name that the Board of Education suggests. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Dr. Beasley? Dr. Beasley? All right, then I'll just, uh.
I'm talking, I was talking without my mic. I apologize. I said Rod Smith was coming at this time to present our extending learning beyond the classroom item. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley. I've submitted for your review. A summary titled extending learning beyond the classroom. Uh, with the, briefly, di- digital equity is the biggest obstacle in preparing for online learning. This is, this can be no longer, this can be, uh, no longer our reality. With the superintendent's recommendation to provide every K-12 student a personal learning device. We can build a robust learning environment that will prepare our students for the future, as well as prepare us for any other impromptu extended school closures. The overall, the overall approach is to provide every third grade through 12th grade student a Chromebook. Um, and give each K through two student access to a device. A couple of quick things I wanna highlight. Number one is the support, and I think Ms. Goree mentioned that in the, in the very beginning, the support that. That the instructional technology team has provided to the teachers while we've been on this, uh, uh, extended, uh, school closure. That will continue and it will magnify as we increase the number of devices that our students will now have. Plus, trying to ensure that those teachers that Ms. Goree referred to. Get the proper professional development and training they need to support our students. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think we need to add the board members to training. So. In the event that we need, uh, have more board meetings like this, that we can do a better job. Because I, I definitely need some training.
Yes, ma'am. I think we can do that.
Okay.
Amen.
Do we have any, uh, uh, any questions or comments regarding Mr. Smith's presentation? Starting, I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Striker because I think he had, uh, some comments I couldn't.
I do. Can you, can you please start with Ms. Bowles? Cuz I, I'm hoping that by the time it gets to me, um, half the questions will be answered cuz I have a lot.
Ms. Bowles, and I'm coming back down on your end. I was trying to, uh, trying to do it better with my classroom with call, uh, calling on students today.
Um, I think, you know, I did share some questions before the meeting, and I was able to see some of your responses, Mr. Smith. So I appreciate you, um, working on that. My, you know, I care nothing more about this. Than making sure every one of our scholars has a device to learn. And my question, and I love all that you've done to make it happen. I know it's, you know, uh, been a labor of love. My, what I don't, what I just do not understand at this time is what's happening with K-2 students. Um, so I know we're giving their teachers a cart that has computers in it that they can give them. If in the event school's out, but I think we know school's out. And so I'm just not understanding, um, maybe it's just, it, maybe it's worded differently in the verbiage. But like, what's the difference between them taking home computers and our three through eight? Um, assuming parents are the, the main ones responsible for it.
So I'll answer that question. That's a great question. Um, number one, relative to the K-2 two students taking the devices home first. Uh, we did a lot of research, and orig- originally, the plan was to only provide the third, um, third through 12th grade students a device. We didn't have the K-12 students as a part of that plan. And, and, and a lot of that was because of the research that we had done, really doesn't put K-12, uh, K-2 students. Um, in that category of responsible enough student to take those devices home on a regular basis. So when I say we're gonna give carts to teachers and assign those students a device, that device will be assigned to that student. Very much like we sign the devices to the third through 12th grade students. The only difference is. That's, that device will remain at the school. And if we do go out on an extended, uh, um, school closure again, those devices will be quickly placed into a, uh. Uh, carrying case or laptop case, Chromebook case, and they can take those devices home. And, um, use those devices just like they would if they were at school for online learning. So, 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 so the main, the main difference is the devices will be assigned to the, uh, K-2 through two students. Um, assigned to them just like we assign the third through 12th grade students. The only difference is. The K-2 two students won't take those devices home on a daily basis.
Thank you for your answer. I think my, my concern here was, um, I, I know we specifically didn't have K-2. In the third through 12th grade SLOSP rollout. We included K-2s directly in response to the pandemic. And then being out of school and having learning lags too. So I just think, you know, my recommendation there is just like, see what we can do to make sure they have, uh, constant access. Since we know that, you know, not much is gonna change by the start of the school year. But thanks again for making sure that there are one-to-one devices available for all our students.
Yeah, and, and, and just, just so we're all clear, Ms. Ms. Bowles, they will have constant access. Because that Chromebook cart will be dedicated to that teacher for those students to always have access. The only, like I said, the only difference is they just won't take them home on a daily basis.
Well, if the babies aren't in school when school starts, how does that work? Like, do you think teachers will issue the, like a textbook at the beginning of the year?
Well, relative to this purchase and, and this, this, um, proposal. We're, we're not really even sure if we're gonna be able to get all the devices, um, at the start of the school year. Just because of the, uh, uh, current national supply chain issue. Um, there are, there are lots of school districts trying to do the very same thing that we're doing. And most of your, uh, Chromebook and PC providers now are struggling with that supply chain. So the, the hope, the hope is that i- at least closer to the end of September, we should know better about when those devices. So, you know, relative to when the kids go back to school, or if they go back to school in, in the, um, in the fall. Um, we'll, we'll have to make those decisions then, and they could very much, they could be very much like they are right now. We would try to do something with the current inventory of devices that we have. Um, but right now, we're planning to do all K through 12, uh, closer towards the end of September. Provided the supply chain, um, is available.
Thank you so much.
Do we have questions from this?
Doc, uh, Doc Smith, uh, if they're not available by September, then what? What is our contingent plan? What is our contingent plan?
Well, from, from a digital, from a digital learning standpoint, I think we'll just try to use the devices that we have. And, and most likely, we, what we've talked about is to possibly focus on those higher grades first, maybe at the high school level, and then work down based on what inventory is available. But, I mean, that's a conversation that we're having internally with my tech, tech ops team. But that, that would, that would also include some discussion with curriculum and, and, and curriculum and instruction on where they felt like the most value could come from issuing devices if we don't, if we aren't able to purchase or lease all the devices before September.
Okay, now, I'm not, I'm not sure if this is your department, but for those of, of those students who does not have internet access, is there any kind of grant or government assistance that we are able to give those parents?
Yeah, so that's a great question. We've, we've, we, we have been working with Dr. Smith and, and, and his group and even with the Clayton County Foundation. Hon- honestly, my opinion is, and my research says that about 10% of the district's population won't have reliable internet access. So we've done a number of things. We've reached out to some of our partners or some of our potential partners like Verizon. I think we've spoken with AT&amp;T. Today I was on the phone with T-Mobile trying to get a sense of what that would look like for, for students. Meaning that we know that we probably couldn't receive enough donations to take care of those 5,000 students that I believe may not have reliable internet access once we give every student in the district a device. So I've sort of planned for that in terms of the CARES Act grant that Ms. Bitten referred to earlier. One of the things that, one of the things that was just mentioned in that, in that CARES Act stimulus fund was that we could purchase internet connectivity or hotspots for students. So the plan is to basically take as many donations as we can, but also to include some, some funds from the CARES Act provided, you know, the, the board and Dr. Beasley, Dr. Beasley presented to the board for approval to, to, to at least purchase 5,000 hotspots to, 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 to take care of that.
Okay, is there, last question, but thank you. Is there any, any way that those particular parents, if, if they had the, we supply them with the necessary equipment because they tap into the school system internet without being burdened with a bill?
Let me, let me see if I understand your question. You, you, you're, you're asking if the parents could take advantage of those devices as well as the students?
No, no. What I'm saying is if they don't have internet access, but we can get the equipment to them, is there any way we can allow them to tap into the school systems?
Oh.
Wi-Fi?
I understand.
They have.
Sure. Sure, I understand. We, we've had that conversation, Mr. Christmas. Every school has basically two wireless networks. One for the staff and employees, and they have a second wireless network for students called CCPS EdNet. We, we have not done a comprehensive study on all those buildings, but we do know there are many of our schools where you could pull into the parking lot and get Wi-Fi access to the CCPS EdNet that would give them the same kind of access if they were sitting inside the building. That's one. One other thing that I'd like to mention is that we've talked to AT&amp;T and I believe the state is, and we haven't been approved yet, but the state was offering what's called some external enterprise routers to place on buses. And I, I think the Transportation Department has said that we could potentially use eight buses. And what we would do was we would place those wireless internet routers on those buses and then strategically place them in our most needy communities relative to Wi-Fi access and/or, or families not having access to Wi-Fi. So that's another, that's another option that we're looking at. You know, the, the, the best option is for, for students to have a hotspot inside of their own living facility.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Williams?
Will these devices have the same access like the school? Like some of the sites, it's supposed to be blocked though?
Yes, ma'am. So, good question. If, if in fact, well, two things. One is when they use our device, they will go through the same kind of content filtering that they would if they were on our network. And we would be able to basically manage those devices through our Google Management Console. So it, it, for, for all intents and purposes, it, they would, it would be no different than them being on our network even though they were sitting in their own house.
Ms. Burrows?
Oh, I was just listening. I noticed that Ms. Williams had questions about the, these Chromebooks and all that. And I said, well, I couldn't wait until she got her answers back. I don't know if they've gotten around to her questions.
Yes, I think those questions were emailed back this morning, I believe.
Oh, they were? Well, I'll just look at those and that'll answer a lot of mine.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Baker?
Mr. Smith answered all the questions I had, so he's, he's on top of it. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
My questions have been answered at this point.
Straker?
Okay, I'm ready to go. Mr. Smith, I was on a Zoom call with two of the chief technology offices for APS of DeKalb this morning. And I, I must commend you on making me look so great because they had nothing but great things to say about you and, and where you were leading Clayton County, where, as a team. We were leading Clayton County in technology. I, I was quite impressed with that. I, I think you might be familiar with them, Tay, Tay Hayes and Derek Brown from DeKalb.
Yes, sir.
They did, they did ask me for your telephone number and I refused to give it to them because I told them they wasn't taking away my Michael Jordan. Just, just two things that I, I wanted to bring up and I'll start with number one. Have you studied the model that Athens, Georgia uses with their businesses? Where they, they made up a decal, a decal that they share with the businesses in their communities? And these decals are put on the, the windows of the businesses welcoming students to use their hotspots for free. So they have some of the Starbucks and, and, and other businesses that will have the, the public schools decal on the window that welcomes the student if they don't have internet access to use the hotspots that the businesses have. And it brings a synergy between the schools and the businesses that is quite impressive. And that's happening right here in Athens, Georgia. Are you familiar with that plan? That, that model?
I, I, yes, sir. I've seen that model before, you know. This event has, you know, put a spotlight on that digital divide or that inequity relative to students having, you know, reliable internet access. Many students use that same, those same kind of efforts now to go to a McDonald's where they have hotspots. So we, we've never taken that approach. It, it's, it's a great idea, I'll be honest with you. If, if we, you know, if, if we through Dr. Smith's division, I'd be happy to, you know, to research that and to figure out how we could do that same thing with the businesses that would welcome students to come in and use their wireless access to do, you know, homework or other work.
Amazingly, what's happening is the business owners are actually helping your children with their homework at the same time.
I, I, I like the idea, I do.
Okay, two more questions, one for you, one for Dr. Beasley. Your idea on where we can save money to, 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 to shift our focus in this, this online learning direction that we're definitely leading to? Do you have any ideas where we could save money and use money for, 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 lack of better word, best, better uses when it comes to our online learning?
Yeah, so we, we've had, and I know you mentioned the, the textbooks. And, you know, I had a brief conversation with Sean Denby, who's in charge of managing our, our textbooks. And we, we know that there could be some savings there at least, especially around the shipping costs, especially around not having to replace so many copies when they get lost, damaged, or stolen, and having to purchase fewer copies. I know Dr. Beasley has even shared a, an idea with Dr. Lee and myself about talking to some of these textbook publishers about how we can maybe streamline that and get some cost savings there. The thing that I spoke with Ms. Bitten about specifically around how we could do some cost savings now that all students would potentially have if, if approved tonight, would potentially have access to those devices. Perhaps we could start looking at where we might have some software or application overlap? I mean, that's something that we, we've thought about and, you know, sometimes it's hard to accomplish that unless that spotlight is, unless you're put in this kind of spotlight where you can now start to look at some of those things. And I believe there are other things we could look at, but I don't have any very, any other specific ideas around, you know, cost savings right this moment. But I can certainly start that research and share that information with Dr. Beasley for you.
Fantastic, thank you. Last question, Dr. Beasley. Walk me through this because I'm, I'm really not familiar with the, the process and the flow. But obviously, this, this pandemic has, has shifted the, the, the focus and strategic planning of every organization. When it comes to the school district and our strategic plan, first of all, when, when is our new strategic plan due?
Well, the, you know, we, the strategic planning process is, is a cyclical process.
Right.
And so we were in the process of rewriting the vision and mission statements.
Right.
And so that's where we are right now. So Dr. Wiley, they can come on and, and share. Our next steps were to bring back to the board after we looked at all the feedback from the community, our revised draft of the statements that we would recommend to the board. And then from there, of course, looking at the goals, et cetera. And so if you look at our, our plan, everything that we're doing, including the technology, the redesign, all of that's directly aligned with our plan. We just have to tweak it, of course, acknowledging our new reality, which.
And that's my question for you is what, what ideas do you have when it comes to that new reality? So that we have something to think about before the strategic plan is presented to us?
Well, I, I'll just say this. I think one of the ideas that I have with our system redesign is really relative to choice. I just want to make sure that as a district, we acknowledge that you, you've got a lot of parents, even at the elementary level, who will want their kids to spend all their time on digital learning, on virtual learning. And so I don't want kids to have to go to one particular school. I think every school should have virtual learning teams and opportunities in case, in case that's what a parent wants to do. And so we're, we're having those internal discussions right now. So let's say at elementary school X, you've got 50 parents who want their children to be in digital, virtual learning all day. Well, why not have a virtual learning team for those 50 students? And for the, to acknowledge in those kids. And so I want to see that type of creativity occurring at all of our schools. In other words, be very innovative when it comes to providing parent choices. I think the day where we expected everybody to do it our way or fit into our mode of thinking, I think that day was probably over some time ago and it's really over now. We've got to be very innovative and creative and flexible with providing our parents these, these experiences for their students that acknowledge that we're in a different day and, and we'll, we'll forever be in this day. And it may be, this may be the blessing that comes out of this, 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 this awful pandemic, that we are not going to do things status quo and that we're going to find a way, find a way to ensure that all students have access to great instruction, whether it be face-to-face or, or in a virtual environment.
Great, thank you so much.
Dr. Anderson?
I have no questions at this time.
All right. Mr. Smith, I thank you for your presentation. And I feel that while we are all talking about everything being technology-based, there are good things about books. I'm a person that is in a book club. I have purchased several books online and I have not one. I like touching books. I like the way they feel and there's nothing wrong with our children having textbooks. Matter of fact, you know, we're all about literacy and it, with everything, I, I like the idea that Dr. Beasley just proposed of us having students that are just, that are virtual because some, some students like to learn that way. But I don't want us to be, as he said, status quo. But I don't want us to just focus single-mindedly upon one way of, of teaching and learning because we know as, as teachers and students learn in different ways. And going back to what Mr. Smith said at the very beginning to make the, let the public know is that we are going to purchase Chromebooks for every single student. And what he was basically saying is, is that when we, if we were looking at a traditional school year, the third, the third through 12th graders would have the ability, and correct me if I may be incorrect, but I want to make sure this is what you were trying to let us know. Third through 12th grade students would have the, would be able to take their Chromebooks home on a daily basis if they want to. They can do what they want to do with the books. But we were saying for K through two, they're purchasing Chrome, but they would be in the classroom and hopefully they would be used on a daily basis. However, if we find ourselves in a situation where we would have to shut schools down, then everyone, including K through two, would take those books home. Is, is that what you were saying, Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am. In essence, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to make sure that because we, we're not, we don't want anybody to think that we're not allowing those, the primary grades not to have the Chromebooks. You know, they, they need to, they're coming out of preschool or whatever. And so, you know, we want everybody to know how to use them because I don't see us, we just passing out Chromebooks to people and no one knows how to use them. I, I don't think that that's being very progressive. I think that we're going to take the investment with our students, but we need to invest in training for everyone. And that includes the teachers, the parents, the students, and as I said, the Board of Education. This morning.
Right.
It would not have taken me three hours to make a video that I, I should have known shouldn't have lasted any longer than one minute and 15 seconds, but it took me three hours to figure that out.
Ms. Goree?
Yes.
May I, may I add? I want to make sure everyone is aware, we have a new director for STEM and innovation in our district, Ms. Dr. Ms. Trina Reeves, the former principal at Brown Elementary School. And on, under your CIA update, you also received a STEM STEAM update, STEM update? And her work will be, you, will be critical to ensuring that we, we really innovate everywhere across the district. And as you say, no one, no one size or one situation that fits all, but ensuring that we acknowledge that there will be many different approaches, but ensuring that all of our students and families have access to the approach that best works for them.
And one other thing that I wanted to point out, it would also help if we had cities, you know, there are some cities across the United States that are, are Wi-Fi cities where, you know, there's access. Maybe we need to start having a conversation with some of our cities about having Wi-Fi access there.
Well, in it, in addition to you all's letter that I, that, that was published on, what website was that? Was that the, I can't remember the name of the website.
Education Post.
Thank you, Education Post. And I, I met today as a team, as a back-to-school task force with the, the National Superintendent's Associate, Administrators Association. And so Dallas ISD, Dr. Heno, Heno, Henoosa, I believe that's his name.
Yes.
Is, is working on, on just that in the Dallas area. And so I think they're going to just basically try to do that for all the major, the, all the major cities and rules, rural areas as well. And so there is some movement in that regard. I'm going to bring that up with Learn for Life and some of our other metro organizations. and some of our other metro organizations. But I think we will probably make some progress, probably more now because of this situation than we've ever made in trying to get everyone access. But we'll, I'll provide more updates as we make more movements.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I got a question for Dr. Beasley, this is Mr. Christmas. Dr. Beasley, am I, am I correct when Mrs. Straker asks, since we are in a new norm, we are changing our strategic plan?
Yes, yes, sir, we are. We're in the process, we were on the early end of that. We've gone through it for three years, and so we're on the early end of making that change right now. And Dr. Wiley, if you'd like her to just share where we are, she can share if she's still on the line, I think she is.
Before she share, let me ask, is there a board member part of the strategic plan? Is there a parent or student part of that strategic plan?
Well, the way the process, remember when we rolled out the timeline, the way the process, the process works, board members, parents, students, everyone is a part of the process and can be a part of the process. With the board approval was basically our timeline, but all of the community events are open to everyone. We do surveys that everyone responds to, and then we always bring it back to the Board of Education for feedback, input, et cetera, and approval.
So, so my question once again, on that particular panel that's coming up with strategic plan, is there a board member at the table, a parent at the table, and a student at the table?
Well, I would say yes, but it's not, we don't have a, we don't have a panel per se. It's a process, and we engage all the different stakeholders in the process. There's no one panel, no, no small group of people that are coming up with what's in the strategic plan. It's a process, and all the different constituents, all the different groups are engaged in that process.
So every time the process being talked about, is there a board member, a parent, or student?
Yes.
Who said yes?
Ophelia.
Yes, I think...
I have participated many times.
Well, that, that, there go, once again, is there a parent?
Mr. Christmas, all I can tell you is that once we announce, once we announce the meetings and the opportunities, I can't tell you if someone's showing up or not, but I do know everyone, every public meeting that I've gone to relative to strategic planning, board members have been there.
Okay.
I think that we passed the gauntlet, but at this time, I'm going to say that what we need to do, Dr. Beasley, is to stay on the agenda. We, this is our, we can, we can talk about strategic planning in our next meeting. Can we please stay on the agenda?
Okay.
Yes. Are we, are we done with this, Mr. Smith? Are we, are we done? Do we have any other questions with, for Mr. Smith? That's the thing we're talking about. Okay, Dr. Beasley, I think our next agenda item is the calendar.
It's a calendar. At this time, Ms. Dawkins will come in and present for the 2020-21 calendar.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, colleagues and Clayton County Community. An executive summary for the school year 2020-21 calendar was submitted for your consideration to propose that the academic calendars for the school district and Elite Scholars Academy be aligned so that the first and last dates, instructional days, holidays, student days away from campus during the academic year, and professional dates such as pre-planning, staff development, and post-planning coincide. It also is a recommendation to approve a series of seven extending learning beyond the classroom days to the 2020-21 academic calendar. And that should be determined as needed or required by the superintendent of schools. And I'd also like to note for the record that this recommendation is being presented to you in light of the COVID-19 pandemic that is currently impacting us and could potentially impact us in the new school year. And I'll yield now to entertain any questions that you may have.
All right, board members, do we have any questions? I'll start with Ms. Bowles. Any questions, Ms. Bowles?
Ms. Bowles, you're muted.
Sorry, no questions, no questions on the calendar at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris?
No questions, no questions.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The learning beyond the class days are only if we go back to a regular school?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time, Ms. Williams?
The learning beyond the classroom days are pulled out, that's only if we go back to a regular school day?
So you should know that the days that we are proposing, which we have September the 11th, so I'll note for the community, the days that we're proposing for extending, extending learning days beyond the calendar would be September the 11th, October 9th and 23rd, November 13th, January 29th, February 26th, and March 26th. And so those days would be considered, as you indicated, regular instructional days, school days, and would count towards the 180-day instructional calendar.
No, that's not what I was asking. I was asking, these days are only if we go back to regular school days where the kids are in school five, five days a week, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if not, then that's probably going to be different days.
If, if, if I may, if we go, if, let's say, let's say we can't go back to school, whatever days that we miss of school will be considered a digital, a digital learning day or what we're calling them extending learning beyond the classroom days. So if we're face-to-face, then we'll have those digital days. If we're not face-to-face, then all of our days will be extending learning beyond the classroom days, at least while we're out.
Okay, so Dr. Beasley, to make this clear to the public, so if we're having a regular school week and September the 11th comes, we are having instruction at the school building, but it's out digital, is that what you're saying?
No, let me make sure. If we have face-to-face, then we'll have instruction at school. Teachers, of course, will always be able to use the devices to provide virtual experiences even when kids are at school. But the days that we've identified on the calendar, the students will be at home doing digital learning days.
Okay, so it's like a student, so is it, it's a, so these are days out of school is what you're saying, on a regular calendar?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to be clear. Okay. Ms. Burrows?
No, that answered my question.
Yes. Ms. Baker?
Ms. Goree, Ms. Baker is having some problems right now, we're trying to get her back on.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Straker?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Dr. Anderson?
No questions, Madam Chair, my questions have been answered.
Okay. All right. I think that looks like we're completely missed, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is the policy Series I, which is a second read of Series I. Do we have any questions? Our comments, maybe to that.
Yes.
Okay, is that Ms. Bowles?
That's me. A lot of questions and comments about the I policy. So I've sent them, but we can talk about it. But I definitely want to pull this from the consent agenda to vote separately. Some overview comments. I think it's interesting that an equity policy, I think this equity policy is really important. And I don't think that we can really be cognizant about using it for our community without a disparity study. So I don't see a disparity study in the policy. I want to include district-wide PBIS in addition to the SEL that was commented on. And one of the biggest things that I want to see different, if possible, is this allocation of resources. There's a specific section about allocation of resources, and the superintendent is able to group per pupil allegations by organization, and the organizations are defined as elementary, middle, and high school. I think this is particularly a problem because we should do per pupil allegations by school site. Because if we do all high, all middle, all elementary, we're going to find trends of different schools experiencing different disparities based on what part of the county they're in. So that's the best practice based on ESSA, the new, you know, policy from the Department of Education at the federal level. So it's not very well implemented, but that is a best practice per that guidance. And those are some of the challenges that I see with this policy. And then the regulations on top of it, I have trouble with.
Okay, what I'm going to do here is, since you asked to pull, we're going to pull it, but I want to point this out to you. This is our second read. And what we do as board members is we, if we had, if we have problems with the, with the policy, we should have sent in those things after the first. So I'm going to pull F and come back and revisit it. So that, because if you, if you're saying we're just going to pull and vote on it, most people may not have read it as thoroughly, and it may end up getting off to your questions that you probably, we'll just pull that item.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, it does, so do we have any other comments regarding policy I? Okay, before we take a vote on the items that have been presented to us, Dr. Beasley just informed me that we did, who's a teacher at North Clayton High School, I believe by the name of Donovan Maxwell?
North Clayton Middle School.
Sorry, North Clayton Middle School. And I would, at this time, like to offer a moment of silence for him and his family. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to vote on the business agenda. We're looking, we're voting on the magnet programs, the voluntary desegregation resolution, the naming of South Clayton Elementary School, extended learning beyond the classroom, the school year calendar. Do I have a motion for those actions?
Show move, Madam Chair.
Show move, Madam Chair.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Straker and a second from Dr. Anderson. Okay, at this time, hold on, I'll start down there with Ms. Bowles. Ms. Bowles, you're voting?
Yes, for the consent agenda without the I policy.
This is not, no, this is, this is not the consent agenda, this is the business agenda.
Excuse me.
We've already voted on the consent. So yes, we're, we've taken that one out, taken I out.
Yes, ma'am, my vote is a yes.
Okay, Mr. Christmas?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Straker?
Affirmative, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and a yes for me, so that's a unanimous vote, nine zero. I believe that we have covered everything on our agenda. Everybody look and make sure that I haven't overlooked something since I'm looking at all these devices.
You did good, you did good, y'all did good.
Good job, Madam Chair.
All right, good job.
Ms. Goree, Ms. Goree, for clarity, you're pulling the I policies to go on next agenda, not just pulling them from the whole vote?
Yes, we're going, we're going to pull them because what I need is for everyone to, Ms. Bowles sent us some, some questions this afternoon. I want everybody to go back and look at them and see, you know, so we can, we can have an informed vote on this. I wouldn't want her to, you know, she has some, some items that she has a concern with, and then we just still vote against her. Y'all need to look at some of her concerns, so if we can pull it for our...
And Ms. Goree, I did send the response to those questions, Ms. Bowles, to everyone.
Yes, I, I know, at the time, I probably was moving after this. Actually tried to make sure we get those things in after the first read.
I just sent them this evening while y'all were complaining while I was typing.
Oh, that was you? I think that we have, we covered everything. I want to thank everybody that tuned in to our board meeting. You all forgive us, we're learning as well as our teachers and parents learning through the... Everyone have a great evening, the meeting's adjourned. Yes, yes.